Okay, thank you. Welcome back to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. This is our Committee of the Whole meeting for April 18th. And please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have any concerns, please notify our corporate officer present at the meeting. We're moving on to item four in our agenda today, and I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Glende.
Thank you very much through the chair and to council. My name is Linda Glende, and my pronouns are she/her's, so you can address me accordingly. I'm the CAO here at the District of Squamish, and I'm excited to present to council and the community today our strategic plan process and the most recent draft that we're hoping to have council endorsed by next week. The purpose of today is to produce for the community the process that got us here so far and as well talk about the actual most recent draft with council and have it forwarded for endorsement next week. So with that, I will start. Up ahead of you on the screen, you'll see the strategic planning roadmap. We started strategic planning with council following the election and shortly after orientation commenced. It's a squiggly line because strategic planning is not linear. There were lots of discussion and debate and back and forth, and we are still editing. And council will be provided with the most recent shortly because we were editing up until a minute ago. And it just walked in the room. The goal was to have the plan completed in, thanks. The goal was to have the plan completed in March 2023. And I think that although we're a month past it, given the volume of business that council has been dealing with right out of the gate this term, that we're still doing quite well, and we're quite excited about having this before you right now. So at the beginning of the process, new council is reminded to refresh themselves or review the official community plan. The strategic plan ultimately is to align with the official community plan. And the goal is, over the next four years, what elements of that OCP, of the community vision, does council collectively want to move forward? In addition, each council member, as you remember, was interviewed one-on-one so that the individual priorities that each of you brought to your election platform on behalf of your constituents was also considered in the process. Once the one-on-one meetings were concluded, then we brought council together as a group along with some senior level staff to provide technical support. And then a workshop was facilitated with council around those OCP priorities as well as each individual agenda. And what that initial debate resulted in were four strategic outcome areas that you see up on the screen, but I'll read them out. The first is resilient people and partnerships. The second is connected and livable community. Third, reliable service delivery. And fourth, prepared for the future. And I've numbered them, but that's just for the sake of the document we're using today. What's important for the community to understand is not one of these is prioritized over the other. They are all interconnected. A definition of each of these strategic outcomes was created in conjunction with council. We're still wordsmithing right to the end. And so you'll see in the draft before you, and that will be attached to the agenda as draft. Particularly connected and livable community is still undergoing some edits for council's feedback. Out of the strategic outcomes, then we worked with council again in a workshop format around creating specific objectives to achieve those outcomes. And what we focused on with council in terms of the facilitation was really the content, the specific areas of content within those outcomes around which then objectives were drafted. On the screen is just an example of some of the facilitation tools that we use to do that. Once the objectives were drafted, we had 20. And we, we, I keep saying we, as a team, so council and senior staff, there were 20 objectives, after which we continued with the workshop and had council prioritize those objectives and were required to limit them to 16. Because ultimately, in a strategic plan, and particularly over the next four years, we can't do it all as much as we'd like to. I believe, and I hope council feels the same way, that this particular workshop and the prioritization occurred was really when the most robust debate and great conversation happened with the group to get to a united place around the strategic plan. At the same time, or concurrent, redundant, I guess, concurrent with council's workshops, staff behind the scenes were working very hard to collate all of the current work that's ongoing, work that's planned, seeing the draft objectives coming out of strategic planning, trying to speculate on what work would be applicable to achieve those objectives, and then created essentially lists of initiatives, work, measures of that work. So how will we know we're successful, the deadline, and who's accountable? This yet hasn't been provided to the public because we are still waiting for the final endorsement of the strategic plan, after which we'll consolidate and finalize the staff work. So today, we are seeking council's consensus on the final draft that is before you. Up on the screen is a prototype that our communications department put together for the public-facing document with graphics. And again, this is just in draft form. Before we get back to the actual strategic plan draft for council comments and questions, I want to remind council at the very beginning of the process, we walked through this intake process or decision-making tool. We are branding it with Squamish graphics. Again, this is a draft and will be updated. But it's essentially a flow chart or a filter, a tool that council can use for the rest of the term when new ideas come up or there are unanticipated initiatives that council wants to consider. And we put it through this lens to understand if it does fit with the strategy and also if we have resources available. And it provides staff the opportunity to give council the information around how we could do a new initiative, what would be compromised if so. And we will continue to remind council of this tool through the term so that we can adequately address anything that may come up that's not currently in the strategic plan. So with that, I will pass it back over to council for your final comments. And note, you just received an updated draft of the strategic objectives. The areas that are still in edit form that we were editing about 10 minutes ago are grayed out for your reference. Thank you for that presentation. Counsel, any comments? Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair, thanks for walking us and the community through the process we've been through so far. And I'm excited to see the draft that's before us. I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit more to the measures of success and the timelines for some of these objectives. So I heard that behind-the-scenes staff have kind of been working on the tactics to achieve some of these. But as I look at it, I'm still a little bit hesitant with not having a specific timelines associated to the objectives in this draft. So just trying to figure out where the best place is for that.
Thank you for the question. And through the chair, staff were working very hard actually on coming up with specific measures of success for each of the objectives. And some of them are very black and white and measurable, and others are more qualitative. And so what our hope is, or what our plan is before next week's final endorsement of the strategic plan is to show where those measures of success are black and white and specific. We will include it in the document. And where they are not, what we've seen in other examples that works quite well with municipal governments where things are more qualitative, or there might be more than one initiative required to meet an objective, is what tactics are we pursuing to meet the objectives? And then those tactics will be laid out with specific measurables and specific deadlines. And some of those are 2023, and some of those are 2026 and everything in between. And we were hoping to have that for council today, but we will have it definitely in advance of next week's endorsement. Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, so I have a few things. Should I just kind of run through? Okay, so one piece that's running in the back of my mind is, and I don't think disclaimer is quite the right word, but there are a number of things in this, like schools, or schooling, healthcare, childcare, housing, climate even, where it's not necessarily, you know, other orders of government have responsibility. Some would say even more responsibility. But we also understand we have an ability to address these things. They are critical things. There's community demand for these things to be addressed. And we speak about our advocacy and some of the ways we will be managing this. But I just wonder if in the final draft, there's a place where we speak about, you know, where we are sort of responding to that community desire and demand and looking for us to sort of take action. Just because I think a lot of people think that we're responsible for the school district here. And so how do we just make that, I think it's worthwhile to make that very clear about as we're trying to address all the concerns that the community raises. There are pieces of it that's really provincial and federal. And so, you know, that's why some of these things we talk about advocacy as opposed to a specific policy to build new schools, for example. That's why that sort of thing isn't in here. I just, some of that contextual piece, and maybe that just lives on the website, I'm not sure. But that's a piece that stuck out at me a little bit in this. In 1D, talk about strengthening community capacity and resources. The word responsibility came up because we're sort of in this together as a community. And I think there's a desire to give the community that responsibility and that ownership. And sort of, it's not just, you know, you can sort of yell at the district and the district will then fix everything for you. Like, we are all smart, you know, resourceful people. And so let's make sure we can kind of do that and share that responsibility. I wondered about, in the preamble for two, just a little bit more acknowledgement of environmental spaces or environmental, you know, we talk about safe and healthy spaces, spaces to gather. But just that sort of, because I think it is an important community value, that sort of environmental protection. We talk about it in the principles. I just wonder, and I'd appreciate hearing from my colleagues, if referencing that somewhere in item two is worthwhile. 3D, which is highlighted, I wondered about reinforce business continuity and improve long-term infrastructure resilience. Because we have, you know, we've done a lot of master planning work and for continuity and so on. So I think we want to address and find anywhere where there's gaps and reinforce and improve that. I'm just sort of worried as written, it could be read that we don't have that, which we do. I think we're looking to reinforce and make sure we're staying on top of these things. So wordsmithing. 4A, it talks about reducing emissions by 45% by 2030. Is that scope one, two, or three? Is that relative to 2010 scope one, two, or three? Like, what are we talking about? I think in the OCP, it references addressing the best and most current science. And so I'm just wondering how we incorporate that. And partly what's going in my mind is what falls out of this direction. I'm sort of hoping that, because when we first did the CCAP and our first strategic plan, we realized the science has advanced. And so something that gives us some sort of idea or direction on how we might need to update these things or what sort of updates we might need to do. And also in the back of my mind, I think we've talked a little bit about, at different times, about carbon budgeting. And I'm wondering, you know, is that something that could fall out of however we articulate this? And it may not be, but does it allow for that, whatever we do? And I come back to something that I struggled with in the first term with new development and new neighborhoods. And we know there's a critical housing needs. We need to provide that. But, and we are significantly lowering the increase of GHG emissions with new development through low-carbon energy and so on. But we're still causing a net increase in GHGs. And so how are we in our planning, whether it's through natural asset management or other tactics, sort of offsetting that and thinking about and understanding that and sort of making sure that all fits in whatever our climate emissions goals are? And, you know, we've noted that there is a gap in our current CCAP and that we're not counting scope three emissions. But those are all things that matter. So I'm just wondering how we articulate that so we can sort of take that next step. I think we've made major, major strides. And how do we make sure that we sort of articulate, we want to keep on that same momentum?
Thanks. Any other comments? Mayor Herford?
Thank you. The Council of Penningill's comments around the environment language being added in section two, is that what you're proposing? I see section four, these things are all interconnected. And I think section four speaks mostly to environmental values. And I think there could be room there to maybe strengthen that if you're not seeing it sort of in the document as a whole. I think that's where it's already been articulated, but maybe there's room to make it more robust. So maybe if you could put your mind to that. I think to, on 4A, I think that the Community Climate Action Plan is a critical part, and it's something that is sort of our part as a community that we can be doing to affect these things. But I do find that the, that's just slightly limiting and other actions. Or maybe that's too vague, but I think there's more, there's more there. But I do like, I want to stay, I prefer to stay at this level where we're talking about the C cap as our specific actions, but it's not exclusively our actions. And that's sort of how, whether that needs to be articulated in that in 4A or not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. But I think there's, I don't think we're quite there, and I'm happy that it's in gray and we're still wordsmithing. I think there's room to, to capture what we, what we mean there specifically. I did want to go to the first page where we talk about our, the sort of council's governing principles, which is the lens that all of these actions would be looked, viewed through. And I think these could use a little more attention to make sure that we're articulating this stuff as clearly as we can. And I've got a couple of examples, and I'm willing to bet that there may be other examples come out through the conversation. But as an example, under accessibility, it says, "We include welcome and encourage everyone to engage with us." And they encourage everyone to engage with us. That's not my intent with this. Perhaps it's strive to have all, to ensure all voices are heard or something along those lines. Because that's really what we're trying to do with, when we have, when we're consulting with the public or we're working together with the public on a project or all those things, is to make sure that all those, all the voices are heard and have access to our services and all that stuff. So I think there's more there than just encourage everyone to engage, engage with us. Although I appreciate the spirit of what's here, but I think we can do a little bit more there. And similarly, on the, in the climate, climate change action, and maybe, Counselor Penningill, this might be the, I think I've got two spots where it's that four, prepared for the future. And perhaps this governing principle could be further developed to incorporate, to address some of your, some of your concerns that I, that I share. I'm just trying to see where they are best to be, to be captured. Because the, a little, my concern would be that some of these objectives, if we make them, if we veer too far from where they are, we're not going to have those specific objectives happening. Whereas we do have these broader statements and guiding principles that might be the better place for some of the broader, the broader language. I don't come with a suggestion as to what, how to, on the climate action, to, to, what to articulate there. But I think that the statement there, which is, "We do what is required to mitigate and adapt to climate change", kind of sums it up, but it's also very blunt, and there's no nuance there. So perhaps that's, that's an area where we could include some broader language. I just wanted to sort of touch on those things. But I appreciate the, all the work to get, to get us to this point. And we're close, and we're down to the, to the word, to the wordsmithing here. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair, a question to Ms. Glende in terms of kind of next steps and the best way to provide some feedback. I think we are close, and I hear that we want to bring this forward next week for adoption, but there might be some tweaks. So what's the best way to provide that to you? Is it through comments around this table right now? Or is there another process that we can use unless there's like some real showstoppers? I think is what I'm looking for from my council colleagues today, if there's anything that's like an absolute no-go. But also want to try and focus our conversation a bit.
Thank you for the question. I'm making notes of the comments, and I can read them back before we close, and I can incorporate those. Additionally, if there's anything missing, my concern is, yes, at some point, we have to put a stop to the wordsmithing. So I would be concerned about opening it up to provide more editing after today. I'd rather do it in this meeting and take notes and have council agree that those will be the edits incorporated. Any more comments? Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I just want to touch on something Counselor Penningill has raised, and that is a lack of, or less of an explicit reference to environmental protection and stewardship. Mayor Herford has pointed out that a home for this theme might be column four, prepared for being prepared for the future, rather than column two or in addition to. We also would expect it to be addressed in column 3D, building business continuity and enable long-term infrastructure resilience, which encompasses our master plans and strategies, a number of which address environmental stewardship. However, I have another suggestion that might be considered in future discussions or as we go further. And that is to add some language to 1D, "Build relationships with community groups and advocate with other levels of government to strengthen community and capacity and resources toward realizing social, economic, and environmental stewardship goals." That might be one way to include environmental stewardship at a high level because that is our intent with those relationships. I might also be inclined to substitute or add fiscal or financial to economic. But some additional, some additional wording might be a way to alleviate the lack of explicit reference to environmental stewardship there at 1D. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from council? Yeah, Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, just want to reflect on, I just, there's a lot to go through here. But rereading the principles, I think the environmental stewardship is fairly clear. I articulated there, which is good. Take the point, too, that it is covered in four. I guess my only hesitation, and I'm not sort of set in stone on this, is I think it's such an important part of a livable community. And I guess that's why I feel a little bit like it's missing. Again, this probably isn't a deal breaker for me, but I think that's why I was gravitating towards mentioning it in that context. Just coming back to 4A, you know, we have talked about an update to the CCAP, and we don't mention the update here. I just want to, you know, again, however we do it, I think the science has advanced. And so how are we articulating that? If the CCAP is one of our key mechanisms, that there is an update? And what is our expectation of the scope or the change in that? Or is it just that we, our only plan is to continue, you know, along with what it is? And we don't actually expect an update, which would be, for my sense, a change. But I guess that's where I'm a little bit unclear about what we're trying to say just yet and how far we're wanting to go. And I would like, I think we need to go quite far, and I'm not sure that's clear enough yet.
Counselor Hamilton, or are you in response to? Okay, Mayor Herford?
Yeah, I have a suggestion for the wording in 4A. Because I agree implementing is one thing, but we know through, we knew from day one that it would need, the plan would need updating to actually get us there. And regulatory change by other orders of government and all sorts of things could help us with that. So maybe it's implementing and refining. Just an addition word, but that may also be captured under D. So I'm curious, I see Ms. Glende's hand.
While the tactics aren't provided in this draft right now, updating the C cap specifically is a tactic that staff will be undertaking in the next term, or this term, sorry.
I'm curious if, if the, if my comments or those comments or the combination of both address your, can address your concern? And if you need, if you're suggesting we need to change?
I guess the one piece is, is just sort of, call me a cynic or a skeptic, is, does that, you know, what tells us that the update is meant to sort of increase our level ambition? Or are, you know, sort of adapting to the newest science? Like, sure, an update, but an update to what end, I guess, is? Do we need to articulate that more? I guess I'm feeling like I would like to have that a bit more explicit, but maybe the room isn't with me on that.
Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, in response to Counselor Penningill, through the chair, I see your desire for more direction. I wonder if that comes from the OCP, though. Like, we have very strong language in the OCP about trying to stay as up-to-date as possible with the emerging science. I think my concern with making this objective more broad at this point is that it, it deviates us as a council and our community from the like really tangible goal of reducing our carbon emissions, our community carbon emissions. And I think that, for me, is the driving factor behind this objective. That includes making sure that we are on track and on target, and we are making sure that our Community Climate Action Plan is up to date. And we change course as need be for where those biggest gains are. But I'm hesitant to broaden that language at this point. And I think that through the OCP language, as well as updating or doing semi-annual or annual reviews of our strategic plan, we can make sure, as around this table, that we are being as aggressive as we need to be and responding to the science as it comes out.
Mayor Herford, did you have something to add?
No, I was just, I was going to refer to the OCP policy as that bigger, as where the sort of ambition part of this lives. And I don't want to dilute this to the school too far. So that covers my point exactly.
Counselor Hamilton?
Thanks very much. Through the chair, I just want to thank the staff for all the work that they do behind the scenes on this strategic planning. I know there's been a, you know, council has sat in this room and in various rooms doing, spending a lot of time pondering, thinking, we've spent a lot of time thinking, probably ourselves, in our own time. But I recognize that staff has done an enormous amount of work to take all our feedback and articulate it in these words. So thank you very much for that. I'd like to ask if we might be able to have, until perhaps Thursday, to consider just the wording of the governing principles. I feel like I haven't had enough time. We focused a lot on the four points and what goes in them, but not as much. We've talked about the ideas of the governing principles, but not the wording of them. So I'd like to ask if we could have possibly till Thursday to get your feedback on the wording of the governing principles.
Absolutely. Staff can work with that, certainly. And then in terms of the feedback that we've received today, what I can do is consolidate it and send it out to council for consideration. And then the draft will be produced and on the agenda for Tuesday. Thank you. Any further comments?
Okay, I would like to also echo Counselor Hamilton's statements of thanks. I think the staff has done an exceptional job of ensuring representation of our most important objectives as a community. And with that, should we motion, oh, Mayor Herford?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I'd like to thank staff and my council colleagues for all the work to get to this point as we sit around here, you know, fine-tuning the finest of five points with this. I think it's truly remarkable that, that seven, seven people with a broad range of goals and experience and can actually get down to this point where we're aligned. with a broad range of, of goals and experience and can actually get down to, to this point where we're, we're aligned. And, and, and trying to just further, further refine to make sure that we're clearly articulating. But it's, it's really remarkable and, and staff for helping us throughout this, this process, which hasn't been, hasn't been an easy one. There's a lot of, our community is facing a lot of challenges and, and the, the, the solutions are, are complex and take far more time for solutions than for problems to develop. So I really appreciate all the effort so far and I'm really looking forward to seeing this, this piece of work come sort of come to life and start being integrated into our future, our future actions. And I'm excited about what we can achieve together as a council. So thank you so much for the work. And, and I appreciate the, the call for a little extra time on some of those fine points. I think, I think it does put some pressure on how amazing they're going to be with, when we, with this extra time we're provided. But I'm confident we'll get there. So thank you so much.
Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. And I just wanted to share that where, where I'm at at this point is if we were to move with what we've got in front of us right now, I, I think that would provide us with a good framework for the remainder of this term. And then, and having said that, I support Counselor Anderson's suggestion of the edit to 1D. I think that wording strengthens that particular box. And I, I just will reiterate the staff thanks for all the work that's gone into this. It's been, it's been a long process. It's been at times challenging and productive all the way through. So the, the guidance and facilitation that we got from staff was great and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. Want to reiterate what my colleagues have said and just add a couple of points. And once again, thank you, staff. It, it has been at, at times a challenging process, some, some really good discussion debate. I have sort of had inner debate about, am I pushing too hard on some things or, or, you know, sharing my opinion too much? I guess I felt on top of the, just the magnitude of, of challenges we face as a community and as a planet, to be frank. I, I remember how much I leaned on our last strategic plan. And so for me, having something really solid that I can stand behind has really driven me where I, I can't sort of just stay silent. I need to raise my voice at, at every chance. And I think we're very close to, to, to something here. I think we've talked a lot about our code of conduct in terms of, you know, we look at other communities and some of their struggles to function as a council. And for me, a strong strategic plan is another really critical tool because you, you spent that time, you've hashed things out and you have a, a direction that you can all work with, even if you have small differences of perspective. Sometimes it, it really brings you together. So for me, this is such a key tool for our success as a council and community. I think it was worth the significant effort. And I also like to say, I, you know, I was lucky to get COVID and so missed some meetings or had to attend remotely. And just really want to, once again, thank my council colleagues and staff for making sure that remote or in person, there was always, you know, we were all included, we're all part of the discussions and no one was left out. And I, I think that helps give me a lot more faith in the, the plan that we've arrived at. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, should we have a motion to terminate? Passed, moved by Counsel, Mayor Herford and seconded by nobody, Counselor Hamilton. Okay, thank you so much.